Make an order. Can I please leave the plane?
What I'm reading is. Shades of that. And shoot the republic for this sense. On the page to. I've heard of it. It is all. The very. Well. Oh, we.
Mayor, Councilman Green.
Yes.
Mayor Protown, Lutherland.
Here.
Councilman Salamani.
Here.
Mayor Ashworth.
Here.
Okay, I'll be coming. And we'll. Let's just three minutes. Dan Williams.
Honorable mayor, city council persons, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm Dan Williams, Teller County Commissioner and the current Chair of the Board. There left to be no doubt that the commissioners stand firmly with Cripple Creek. We did so during the pandemic and we try to keep your businesses open to include the casinos. Well, we got some funds from the federal government. We cut a check to you. Well, we both found out a few months ago that they were taking money away from you on your casino revenues. We got it at five o'clock in the morning with your staff and went to testify and we won and that resulted in your money coming back. When a fire threatened Cripple Creek for seven days, your county commissioners spent day and night with those first responders and other decision makers so that Cripple Creek would be spared. But we can't stand with Cripple Creek in legalizing recreational marijuana. And the reason is not because we have anything against it. It's the law of the land. It's legal. You could pick it up on the way back from Costco. It's not about marijuana. It's not about the people that use it. It's mission failure for us. The three largest counties in the state of Colorado that sell recreational marijuana over seventy percent are Adams, Rappahoe and Denver. Look at the size of their budgets. They can deal with the impacts. They have cops and narcotics squads and mental health experts. We don't have any of that. We have thirty-two hundred culverts that we can't even keep clean right now during the wettest July in history. Okay, we're at ten thousand feet. We got folks on the street right now that are up here gambling that are in their seventies with pre-existing conditions. They can barely breathe. They get free alcohol. I talked to the district attorney a few days ago about this issue and he wanted me to tell you and Jason will cover it as well. There is no regulation in the state of Colorado that tells you how much THC you can have in a Gumi Bear or in a cookie or even in a product that you buy, not like three point two beer eighty proof alcohol. So you have no idea what's going to happen to the folks that come up there. It'll fundamentally change my home. I grew up here as a kid. I came back after thirty years in the military. This is our home. It's your home as well. We don't want to be the pueblo. We don't want to be Mountain Two Springs, you know, and all due respect to those towns and the people that come from there. This is a family business. It's going to hurt your traditional businesses. All I have to do is start walking down the street and watch routes that change. The candy store owner is gone. I stopped and talked to the general store. We already have a controversy going on about what's going on with small businesses. Look, here's the truth. The truth is in the last year, the state of Colorado has had a twenty percent degradation in recreational marijuana sales, a forty-four percent degradation in medical marijuana. We're being targeted by big marijuana, both Teller County, you're the first city, Woodland Parks next, and of course a vulnerable city that's struggling right now with some of the finances due to the device fees. We need to wake up and realize that that's what it's about and we have to figure out who we are. So I would just say in my three minutes, I respectfully ask, we stand with you. We'll continue to stand with you, whatever decision you make or they go over tenderfoot. It's five nanograms. Spend an hour with the guy that taught me more than I do and needed to know about what a deal ID is. All you gotta do is twitch wrong and you're arrested. Jason will tell you who's in our jail right now. So I would say for short-term gain potential that is doubtful, I'd ask you to trust your county commissioners. Today with Paul Harris, we worked with the gaming commission to try to change that formula so that you realize more revenue, in fact, probably more revenue than you get from marijuana potentially. The other thing we'll probably do on stage two is introduce the constitutional amendment because the devices are never coming back online nationwide. Because of the pandemic, they've got a sweet spot. So we need to go back and get a bigger percentage. So I would ask you to work with us, stay in the light, don't get tempted by this. Again, it's not anti-marijuana. It's not anti-people. It's the impacts that would follow the Teller County EMS medical and law force that we can't handle. So really appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir.
Sir, Motel.
Good evening. I hope you guys are doing all well tonight, y'all. I want to come out and talk a little bit tonight about marijuana. A lot of people think I'm actually against marijuana. I'm not. I think that if people want to do it in their own homes recreationally or with medical, that's fine. That's what they choose to do. But I am here to talk to you a little bit about what are the repercussions? Several years ago, we had a big problem in Teller County with marijuana, a lot of the illegal marijuanas. This, if you remember, right, the state told us that we didn't have a black market marijuana problem. It was all legal. It was all good and it was increasing the state's coffers. But what really happened when we started going after the black market marijuana, it changed the paradigm in the state for understanding what black market marijuana really was. We were kicking indoors on unlawful marijuana grows throughout the county. And you know what we found a lot of in these marijuana grows? There were marijuana coming from legal marijuana grows that were coming in here, going to organize, trying to be shipped elsewhere because they were selling it out the back doors. The other side of it is this. I went to Canada, the Royal Mounted Police in Canada requested I come and I give a speech and talk to their police about the impacts before they legalized it. So I did. I talked about the fact that when you legalize it either recreationally or by medical, you will bring in a bad element. It will happen. You're going to have higher homeless issues. You're going to have more violence, not all based on the marijuana, but because of the issues that you're bringing in with that type of thing. Last year I got a phone call back from them and said, you're right. Everything that you told us happened. But I didn't miss anything. And here's the biggest issue we have in Cripple Creek. We don't have the resources here to deal with the behavioral health issues, the ambulance services. You have two ambulances. What happens when you have two overdoses and now you can't get somebody to a heart attack in time? There's a lot of issues that involve marijuana. The other side of it is the policing side. The costs in the cities that have had recreational and legalized marijuana had an increase in crime that sometimes they can't even give you the numbers. There's a lot of issues. A lot of it's on the public health side. We have one public health director in this county, right? She sits in Divide and she does a great job with things. They don't have the capability to assist the amount of people we're going to be dealing with. We have one hospital in this county. Recreational marijuana in this city, what will happen is you have people that are going to be coming here from other states to stay in your hotels. They're going to recreate. They're going to buy their marijuana. They're going to go out of Cripple Creek and into another county or into another state, which is illegal. You can't take it to another state. That's why they're going to come here to stay in your hotels. The other side is that what are they going to do with the marijuana? It's still illegal to smoke it in public. You can't smoke it in public. So they have to smoke it in their hotel rooms or in a VRBO or someplace that they are staying while they're in town. How are the casinos going to deal with that in their hotel rooms? How many times do you want to go to a hotel that has the marijuana odor in it? I don't like staying in any of them anymore. So I think there's a lot of issues that are coming up that we've really not looked at yet. And a lot of people are going to tell you I'm dead wrong, but I'm going to tell you something. I've been right a lot of times about marijuana and what it does and where it comes from. My agency still spends every single night dealing with people that are using marijuana that we've got on weapons violation, domestic violence issues, driving under the influence of drugs coming sometimes from Victor City Cripple Creek from subdivisions. We're already dealing with it. I don't know how we deal with it exponentially if we're selling it legalized up here at a much higher dosage that somebody can grow at home.
Can revote for.
Absolutely, I will. Thank you so much. The last thing I want to tell you is we stand against the sheriff's office to what it'll do to us. But the fourth judicial district attorney, Michael Allen, also stands against it because he knows what it's done to Colorado Springs and El Paso County just by one place. Thank you so very much tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Thune.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of council. It's always a joy and a pleasure and an honor to appear before you. I just want to bring up a couple of things and I do want to encourage you, you know, to not approve the ordinance, send it to the voters and let the case be made there. You know, before I came up today, this morning, actually, I gave a family member a call. He happens to be a board certified psychiatrist in a major metropolitan hospital in Denver, runs a psych ward in Denver. And I asked him two questions. The word out there is that marijuana is a hundred percent safe, safer than alcohol, safer than coffee. That's the thing they're saying now, safer than coffee. Is that true? And number two, how many people are in your psych ward right now because of cannabis use? And he said, it's absolutely not safe. It's not true. So the rate of psychosis and schizophrenia among those who have family members with a history of psychosis and schizophrenia is increased by a factor of nine, especially when using edibles. So there very much is an increased risk. And the answer to the second question they had for him is he currently has six people under the age of twenty-five in his psych ward suffering from cannabis psychosis, generally schizophrenia. It is real. It happens and is a public health issue. It's a public health issue that Teller County does not have the ability to respond to. There is not a psych bed in the county. So anybody who does have a psychological issue or psychological, excuse me, an issue of psychosis, they will have to be taken somewhere else in their, you know, to Colorado Springs to a psych ward there. We do not have the bandwidth. We don't have the services whatsoever to provide that. I do serve on our county mental health board and we struggle right now to be able to provide services for the problems that we have today without creating any new problems. So I do want to encourage you again to send this to the voters, vote it down so that they can, the voters can have the truth given to them and I appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Mike Lindsay.
Good afternoon. Michael Lindsay, President and Chairman of Gold Camp Association. I'm here tonight to just do a brief update.
Put your head red. Red red.
I've stayed with friends up here. I've had COVID. I've had to move down. I just stay with friends. But I'm the president of Gold Camp Association and I am the Americanism Officer for the American Legion. I'm a member of the Two Mile High and Teller Rifles. If I hadn't gotten COVID, I wouldn't have had to leave this wonderful city. This town has enormous human capital. Number of years ago, I stood before the prior city council and said that there was an economic problem in the city. Pretty much they agreed. We began to work together and the citizens began to work together and the not-for-profit community began to work together and we formed ultimately the Gold Camp Association. COVID came along and the financial crisis of this city became magnified by an unbelievable member. City council here and the mayor did a wonderful job of leading us through that endeavor. And you had the unfortunate duty of notifying the not-for-profit community that they would, that the city would not be in a position to fund events. The citizens, the not-for-profit community in many ways came through on its own, maintained a process of keeping the events alive, worked hard with the businesses and the casinos in the city and the staff to ensure that events would continue on. We proposed a model based on unity, collaboration and the process of behaving in a civil fashion in the face of massive conflict. This model proposed that not for, excuse me, not-for-profits should actually run events. And that model has proven to be true. The American Legion Teller Rifles and the Two Mile High Club are financially stable. I wouldn't say they're flush with cash. Our next endeavor where we really wish to proceed forward to is to help the businesses and the casinos improve their financial situation by working with them to find out what kinds of activities we can embed in our events that will draw up here the kind of people that will actually shop, enjoy the casinos and enjoy our hotels and enjoy our restaurants. I would just want to say thank you to the city council and the staff for the support you were able to give, even though it wasn't as much as we would have wished for. But we appreciate it. We recognize your work. And I just want to say on a personal note, and this is a very, very, very personal note to me. Nineteen years old, I fought in Vietnam. I'm the recipient of two Purple Hearts and a combat action ribbon. Some of my men did not make it back. They would have loved the freedom, the camaraderie and the dedication demonstrated by the citizens of this town, by the city council in this town, to try to pull this town out of the financial crisis. It's been my honor to serve the citizens of this community. Thank you very much.
Andy Durham.
Good evening, council. My name is Annie Durham. I reside at three zero nine Aspen Street. Just two quick things. Number one, my husband Bev and I would like to commend and congratulate the old homestead house, their board and volunteers for an excellent Pearl De Beer Days on July twenty-third. We've lived in the community now for nine years, so we've been to several bed races and that day was without question the most well-attended that we've experienced. It was also our first time touring the museum and we were in awe of the diligence that has been taken to preserve this community's history. So if you haven't gone to the museum, I highly recommend you do so and Councilwoman Trinari, it was nice to see council representation at the event. So thank you so much. Again, hats off to them. Secondly, Bev and I would like to extend our sincere thanks to Steve DiGiamillo, Public Works, Jeff Regester and Earthworks and anyone else who has had their hands on the water line and hydrant installation project on Aspen Street. Incidentally, that work is taking place directly in front of our house and we feel that that being said, we feel that great care has been taken to ensure that the impact of the project has been very minimal on our daily life. With the exception of half a day that we couldn't access our driveway, we are very pleased with how it's gone. That being said, we have a thirteen-month-old rottweiler. He has his own very strong opinions about the project. Every time I take him out to go to the bathroom for a walk, he feels inclined to give a warning bark to the equipment. I think to ensure that the equipment understands where our property line is. But in all seriousness, we are, we're very grateful with how it's been handled and we feel it warrants public recognition. So thank you again to everyone involved with that. And lastly, all staff is back at school next week. Kids are back August fifteenth, so we're ready to get rolling with the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So thank you.
Thank you. Randy Wolf.
Frankie Wolf, one-one-two West El Paso Avenue. Your mayor and council, everyone. I'm here to tell you about a brand new online forum on Facebook called the Cripple Creek Communicator. I've developed it to serve as an ongoing, open dialogue platform for anyone interested in Cripple Creek. And here's why. When I see that there's an explosion of growth in our city and that's exciting for some, but concerning for others, when I wonder if the city has thought about things that will enhance or protect our quality of life and our property values and I hear defeating statements like, my complaint fell on deaf ears or they only care about the casinos. And when I see there's division in such a small but wonderful town here. And then when I know that every one of you here who serve our community are doing this voluntarily and I believe that you do all care about us and the city because you live here too, it makes me want to help. So I created the Cripple Creek Communicator as a place and an opportunity for ongoing dialogue that connects us all and just gives everyone a voice. And to give the council members a great opportunity to build trust with your constituents by showing the community that their leaders are accessible, that you do listen. Your engagement there also would provide accountability and that all builds trust. You can also use your input to educate and lead and squash negative rumors and to inspire just by being who you are and communicating. People have great ideas and also definitely grievances. And as our representatives, I assume you want to know these things for many reasons. And having a presence there will go a long way to helping people feel like their voices are being heard. As you all and city staff are running the show and I just want to provide more opportunity to feel like we're all part of the show instead of the show just happening to us. So bottom line, I'm here today to invite you to join the platform, not only as council members, but as members of our community. And I ask you to encourage all city staff to join too and give them assurance that they're able to speak as individuals and use that opportunity to keep an ear out for the community that they serve. And I think together we can make that a very useful tool. And on a technical note, I can speak with you privately or whatever, but I'm happy to add like a blanket disclaimer to the site that says, you know, staff are speaking for individuals and not on behalf of the city, unless they specifically say so. So I brought some flyers for the information and I thank you for your consideration and hope to see you all there.
I'd like to put a comment. This time have approval minutes for the June, for July twenty-two and July twenty-two for the meeting.
Almost we approved the meeting minutes for the regular meetings on July sixth, twenty twenty-two and July twenty twenty-two.
I'll say it. Vote please.
Councilman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Trinari.
Yes.
Councilman Salamani.
Yes.
Mayor Protown, Lutherland.
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a couple of things. Actually, just one. Because I was advised this week that the Gaming Commission has relaxed the rules for children in the casinos. It's still going to be up to the casino to regulate how they want, but from my understanding, the children are being allowed to go through the casino even to stand with their parents as long as they're not wandering around. But so we'll see how that works. But again, it's up to the casino and how they adjust, but the Gaming Commission has relaxed their regulations. And just to comment kind of on the marijuana thing there, when we get to that item, I've had five emails and a text message today and the people don't really understand the process that has to happen through this. So if it's okay with the mayor, I'd like Aaron to have time during, before y'all take that item or vote on that item to explain the process and what the council has to do according to state law. So that way the public understands what you're up against. So thank you.
Final statement. You and council all have several questions on this. This. Jim and Adam K. Consider approval of Regulation twenty-two dash twenty-five. The Regulation to rescind restrictions on open burning in the city of Cripple Creek. Be gone.
Mayor and Council, Joe, the fire chief. It's been raining, which is a great thing. The Teller County has rescinded their burn bans or fire bans. We are trying to stay in sync to the degree we can, as much as Cripple Creek's community is slightly different, but we do not feel at this point that there is a need for a fire ban, for long-range forecasts. So far, it's still calling for rain. This may change by next meeting, but as of tonight, we'll ask everyone to be careful. But my recommendation is to rescind the current stage one burning. I'd like to take any questions.
Your motion.
Yeah, I'll motion that we the council considers approval to approval of speaking. Approval of Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-five, Resolution to rescind restriction on open burning in the city of Cripple Creek.
I'll second.
Vote.
Councilman Trinari.
Yes.
Councilman Green.
Yes.
Mayor Protown, Lutherland.
Yes.
Councilman Salamani.
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'll be. First read of twenty-two dash oh-nine in order to the city council for the state of Cripple Creek, Colorado, extended a temporary moratorium on opening and upgrading short-term rental and declaring an emergency.
City Council, Mayor, good evening. Jeff Modger, Special Project Director for the city. So we're requesting, staff is requesting that we extend the emergency moratorium on short-term rentals by two months. The new expiration date would be November second.
Your motion. Questions, why?
So this will provide enough time for you to act on the ordinance that you'll be receiving for the next item on my agenda. In order for us to fit the readings, the first reading, the second reading in your vote, we extended it by two months. That gives us some wiggle room if it does take us a couple of extra weeks somewhere. We also have to notify in the papers. So it's just giving us a little more time so we don't have a lapse between the current moratorium and when the ordinance will go into effect.
You know the question.
I would like to ask a question. Under staff recommendation and council action request, you have a line in here. It says, in order to have a meaningful appeal, the recommendations that the city hire and have on standby, an administrative hearing officer.
That's the next item on the agenda.
Okay.
You have a question?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
There. Motion please.
I make a motion, we approve ordinance number twenty-two-two dash zero-nine.
Second. Vote please.
Councilman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Trinari.
Yes.
Councilman Salamani.
Yes.
Mayor Protown, Lutherland.
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth.
Yes.
You know, I would say approval of twenty-two dash ten in order to the city of Cripple Creek, Colorado, amendment chapter six of Cripple Creek Municipal Codes, add a new article, article to hand relating short-term rent.
So staff recommendations currently, the staff recommends that city council confirm the cap of the number of short-term rentals allowed in the city. The current cap in the ordinance is thirty-five. Originally, we had done some research and found that there were twenty-eight operating short-term rentals in the community. Those businesses were contacted and all of them were in compliance with getting business licenses. After that research, we, we've reached out to an organization that helps manage municipality short-term rental policies. They reached out to the internet. They have a hundred plus sites that do short-term rentals. They looked into forty of them very quickly for us and found that we had thirty-eight operating in our community when we thought we had twenty. Since that time, we've had three operating with business licenses that have now closed their VRBOs. So we're down to, we think, thirty-five. So we would be at that, that number that's in the ordinance. So city council just has to confirm that thirty-five is the number you want to be at or if you want to change that higher or lower. Next, staff recommends a city council contract with an administrative hearing officer to hear the appeals on violations and or civil penalties or permit revocations. The reason we would like to do this, we'd like a third party involved. So the city administrator is to get out of that loop since the city administrator would be part of the issuing those citations. If there's an appeal on either a fine for a violation or a revocation of their license to operate short-term rental property, we ask that we use a an administrative hearing officer, whether that be a judge, municipal judge, or an attorney that has a hearing officer cat capacity. It wouldn't really matter. We could actually use a pool of attorneys to be able to address those appeals. This would take the process out of the municipal courts and they get a lot more fluid and. And they get a lot more fluid and and more efficient and avoid that longer process in the municipal courts. The next recommendation, staff recommends that the city council set the short term rental fee at two hundred ninety eight dollars per year. This is going to be set not through this ordinance, because that fee is not in the ordinance, but you will have an opportunity to set that fee at a later date. That fee is set up based on accepted practice from other communities where you take the average night stay, which is currently a hundred forty nine dollars here in Triple Creek, and you double that, and that's what your annual fee is. It basically is two two night, two nights of their income would go to their their permit fee. So staff is recommending recommending that city council approve this addition of Article ten to the chapter six of the municipal code. There is a mention in in the ordinance about the good neighbor guidelines. Those are included in your packets. Hopefully you had a chance to read through those. Those are the staff worked hard to make sure that those guidelines meet meet what we feel the community of Purple Creek would want for noise, trash removal, snow removal, those types of things. And let me look real quickly to make sure. We do have in the definitions of the ordinance, there is one request. Definition of the let me find it really quickly. Definition for a short term rental business. It currently reads a short term rental business means that occupation of leasing or renting one or more short term rental units. We would like to remove the or more. Because we do require a permit and a business license for each unit that's operating. So the short term, a short term rental business may, I have multiples, but it would be that each unit operated by that business would have to have a permit and a business license. Any questions after reviewing the information that was submitted?
We're talking about having outside person to the arbitration.
For for, yeah, civil fines, any violation fines and revocation.
What what kind of what kind of talk?
Oh, I don't know that.
And we could get that amount would be part of the appeal fee that needs to be paid.
So so that would fall onto the person. Also, Jeff, what what are we talking about as far as if we if we take out the business language? People that already have units, in other words, they may have three or four units in the same building. Are we going to charge each one of them a fee or a license for each unit in the same building?
If it's an apartment building that's already licensed as an apartment building, then that that would be, they can't do short term rental.
Yeah, but so we already have short term rentals that have more than one unit.
Yeah, yes, they they would be required for each unit to have a license and a permit, or a permit and a business license.
A business license for the whole unit or per?
Per unit.
Uh, Jeff, I have a question. I I know you put a lot of time into this and you and others. Again, let's go back to the standby administrative hearing officer. I I still understand why we have to have some a special officer when I think it's going to be done in municipal court.
It could be done in municipal court. It would just take more time and it's more cumbersome.
What I, this is an observation of my part. In the last six months to the year, once the city seems to be adding more and more employees, I know nobody wants to hear that. However, uh, it's a trend that is, in my mind, is not good. Uh, but I'm just questioning the fact that it seems to me that one of our judges could be a reasonable prospect for that position.
I've got one. Um, the inspection process. Who is going to do that? Will that be someone currently on city staff?
Yeah, the the that will be in the building planning department and and the fire chief or fire department as.
Okay, and then what I did not see, tell me if I'm wrong, I did not see anything in here outlining what would be involved in that inspection process as far as like.
Under the guidelines for operating a short term rental business. It lists, it lists what you're required and and that would be drawings and maps. So they're going to look at safety issues like egress windows, fire extinguishers, those sets of things that are going to fall underneath the privy of the the building inspector.
Okay.
And and the fire fire department as well for for safety. So it's not written out in the ordinance. But they will inspect as they would any other property, whether it's habitable or not. And habitable in a sufficient manner to to allow short term rental.
And this is done annually before renewal of the license?
So the new, it would be done if they, when they apply, when they're going to be issued the license, the new license would be taken, done right then. On a renewal, it's every two years. That was it? I thought you had a bunch of questions.
You're saying we have a number one license and we identified these unlicensed.
Unfortunately, we have not contracted with that company, and so obviously that's part of their business so that they are reluctant to give us that information.
I'm saying if we know for a fact that we've got a number one license. I don't think they should be included in our account because they're going to have license just like.
Yeah, so currently we have twenty five. We know we've got a couple that we've we've been talking with since the moratorium went in place. So we we kind of want to make sure there's a buffer zone to to help those folks out that
And I agree.
That got caught.
They've done it, right?
But you're right, that's up to city council. I'm, you know, if what you guys want to set that number at, and that would determine how we respond to those those others. And and again, they only looked at forty out of their one hundred sites that they could search. So if they go to all one, they said normally they they look at seventy sites. So there may be more. And and at that time, we'll have to respond to those in accordance to this ordinance that you guys pass. And so they would not fall under this number at some point.
I just want to make that clear that we're not going to allow them to, they're going to have to step up just like if they were brand new. Then get their licenses as such, and now have to get mine just like everybody else.
Exactly. So there's a, there's a lottery. As you read through the ordinance, there's a lottery process for new licenses as they become available. And we did change the number of licenses as as the city housing stock improves or grows, we we changed that wording wording to be one for every twenty new units. So every twenty new housing units in the community, we would add one new SDR, short term rental license. And that would be a lottery system as well, if we're at max. Obviously, if we're not at max, they would auto, they they would get the license if they meet all the guidelines.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other question? Their motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion. We approve ordinance number twenty twenty two dash ten is recommended by staff. Allowing for the change in the section six dash dash ten dash ten definitions. The definition of short term rental business. The wording wording or more will be removed out of that definition.
I'll say.
You know, I need.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. You work so hard.
Mayor, as you know, you and I have been working on this for a while. We both feel that there's a lot of grants out there. There's a lot of money at the state level, and of course, we don't have staff available to do all that research and also apply for the grants. So I went on a city manager's list that I'm on through through CML and asked if any of them used outside grant writers, and we did get a response and we interviewed Ms. Klesmeyer over the internet, and she sent a resume. After the, after the interview, we asked her for a resume. That's in your packets. She's available. She's currently the interim city manager down at Crestone. Is that the word you said, Crestone? She's been a city administrator in other cities in Colorado, but her real business is grant writing and administration. So she charges eighty five dollars an hour. She's available currently on Tuesdays, so she could come in Monday evening and be with us on Tuesdays. So my plan was for maybe the first two Tuesdays is have her go around with staff and to all the staff members and see what we're currently doing. I don't want her to repeat something like Ted's doing in transportation. But to see what we're doing and then maybe would, she could offer assistance. Specifically, I want to work on affordable housing, but there could be other things in the other departments. There's money is available that she could help us with like broadband access. There's there's lots of money at the state level that's come from the feds. So we we currently, along with this, if you approve Paul and I worked on maybe fifteen thousand for the remainder of this year. To some grants will reimburse the city, some will not. So we need some money to work with in case the grant she applies for does not cover her writing the grant or administering the grant. And we won't know that till we look at the grant itself. But so that's kind of the plan. If you're so willing to move forward with this, and then if if she does a good job this year, we're trying to put a little bit of money in next year's budget, but we'll see how this year goes first. And I'm available for questions.
It's only through the end of the year.
Right now, it'd just be to the end of the year. And then, of course, like I said, we put a little money in next year's budget, but that would be approved through the budget process, and that doesn't happen until the end of the year. So hopefully we'll see the activity that she's able to generate for us.
And we're going to get that fifteen
for this year. For the remainder of this year, yes.
Where the funds come from?
It's coming out of the contingency fund that we talked about about thirty minutes ago.
Uh, but one thing I want to say to the folks here in the council chambers. I don't know if you're aware of this. Grants are extremely important to the city, to Teller County, to everybody. Connie Dodge drove down a parking wreck, landed when she interstaffed six hundred and forty thousand dollar grant due to the sidewalks and all that concrete work down there. I want to point that out. Ted White, your fifty, this is the last couple of weeks. Fifty thousand out at transit. Steve DeChamela, where are you?
It was about six hundred and fifty in addition.
Six hundred and fifty thousand. This is all within a period of what, three or four weeks we've got the results from. Well, you know, and it's taken months and some cases, years. But grants in many ways have kept this city going. And with a grant writer, I think that we can improve our chances since every city in the state of Colorado is going after the same grant we're going after. So that was the purpose of all of this.
Thank you, Joe. Thanks, Frank. Your motion?
Okay, I I vote you that we approve the post to hire, what is it, Wesley? Klesmeyer, for sustainable future pragmatic solutions to assist with grant writing.
Consider approval of professional service agreement with Aqua Works for water wastewater line replacement extension program. Thank you, Mayor, Council. As you know, last council meeting, I brought this before you to award the RFQ to Aqua Works, just a little history for the citizens that are here and online. Few months back, we went out for a request for qualifications for an engineering. We had six proposals that came in. The mayor, myself, the council member Solomani, Paul and Steve and Mickey. Six of us graded those RFQs individually, and then we all got together to talk about them and Aqua Works was the one that floated to the top, actually by quite a margin. And one of the reasons is Aqua Works has a lady, Amy Zimmerman, that worked for the state and actually went through grading applications for grants through the state drinking water fund and other grants, and she is now working for this company. And I think that's one of the reasons that this company floated to the top is because we really want somebody that understands the grant applications with the state and can get us the most grant funds instead of loan. We do have a little bit of capacity for loan, but not much. So the more grant money we can get, and this project is to replace what some water wastewater lines in the city and also to extend the utilities to areas of the city where we have planted lots, but no one can build on them because there's no utility. So that's kind of the plan. And currently, we're looking at numbers of six to eight million dollars. And because we are a very low to moderate income community, I think the vast majority of that will be grant, if not all of it. So but the the project, if hired tonight, will sign contracts. They'll come to town, they'll get with us on the project. That'll immediately fill out the forms for the drinking water fund and set up a meeting within one to two months. At that time, we will know the amount of grant and the amount of loan that we're able to get, and then we'll, of course, move forward with design and of course, we'll bring that back to y'all once we know what those numbers are. That's the plan.
Yeah, I'll motion that we approve professional service agreement with Aqua Works for water wastewater line replacement extension project.
A second.
Councilman, yes.
Yes.
Mayor Proton, yes.
Yes. Yes.
Mayor Ashford?
Yes. Next two agenda items.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. As you stated, the town of Morrison Police Chief reached out to us earlier this spring. See if we are interested in sending officers up to support their events at Van Dammeir Speedway and Red Rocks concerts, et cetera. Through the process, we decided we should create a reciprocal agreement to send them. So we're asking you to approve this agreement. So officers that are off duty would be able to assign, sign up for extra duty. To go up and work these events for them and also present them with an agreement. Should we need their officers to come down here. This agreement does compensate the officers fifty dollars an hour with a two dollars administrative fee included. So the officers would get forty eight bucks an hour for that detail with a four hour minimum. You got any questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
Or do we now, well, two questions. Do we have officers that are interested in?
Yes.
Do we have the officers teaching this?
Uh, yes.
They're off.
It would be their off duty. Yeah, it would be off duty assignments only.
Do we have any liability?
Um, that would be covered under our workman's comp. They would still be an officer for the city of Triple Creek, following our policies, our procedures, while they're on their detail up there.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Not to her motion.
A motion to approve the special detail assignment agreement.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Follow money?
Yes.
Your protest on motherland?
Yes. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this time I love Aaron. Give us an update or brings up speed on what we're really getting into here. How it operates.
Thank you, mayor. That's an important, um, very important um detail to give you because state law is um structured so that you have to deal with this more proposed ordinance in a very strict fashion. So what I'd like to tell you is what state law requires you to do um and to also provide a little bit of background. So recall that um I believe it was in early July um that a group of petitioners came forward, submitted to um the city through the city clerk a proposed ordinance. That ordinance is before you tonight. It's been marked as ordinance uh twenty-two dash oh eight. The city clerk's job in connection with receiving that ordinance was to look and the petitions that accompanied it were, was to look at the form of the petitions and make sure they satisfy the requirements of state law, which also is very strict with regard to the form of the petitions. Um, the city clerk, and I should commend the city clerk and her deputy for the extraordinary work and the quick turnaround in that review of that form of petition. Um, the city clerk um found um after a couple goes, couple go rounds um that the form of petition was uh satisfactory and the petitioners could begin to collect signatures. The petitioners then collected signatures and they had been informed by um the city clerk that they had a deadline to turn those signed petitions in by July twenty-fifth, and they met that deadline. Uh, petitioners uh submitted their signed petitions. And then, again, I would commend this the city clerk and her deputy for the great job they did in their diligent work to review all of those signatures. And ultimately, the um city clerk did find that the requisite, the requisite five percent of um of those voting in the last election um were, had signed the petition. So she was able to um evaluate numerous petition, numerous signatures submitted and um cast out those that didn't meet the statute requirements. And ultimately, she did find that there were enough valid signatures to warrant a statement of sufficiency. She informed the petitioners, I believe, that that during that same week, which is week of July twenty-fifth, that they had um enough signatures on the petitions to move the matter forward. And that's what brings us to tonight. State law says that uh the initiated ordinance must come to the city council in the exact form that the petitioners submitted it to the citizens. So if there were problems with the ordinance, um if there were um concerns about the legality of the ordinance and how it was presented, the city council's hands are tied, and they cannot make any changes to the ordinance. The city council must make an up or no determination on the ordinance. Um, you might either approve it tonight on first reading, or you reject it tonight on first reading. And the the memo in the packet gives you those two forms of the motion. Um, if if approved, um, you know, it moves forward and you would then consider it on second reading. And um it would then be considered ultimately for adoption. Um, if you rejected my motion this evening, then um state statute is very clear that what you must do is re-set a ballot title and refer the the ordinance to the voters. Um, so that would come to you in a subsequent meeting, you know, if your decision tonight was to move to reject the ordinance. I will tell you, um, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop there, and then I I I do want to provide you some substantive comments about the ordinance itself, but I will stop there to see if you have any questions about the process.
No, I don't know if it's clear.
So let me just uh talk then substantively, substantively about the ordinance that's been um petitioned for and that's been submitted. Um, I will tell you that what this ordinance does is is two things, or at least it purports to do two things, right? In in broad terms, the first thing is it um allows for regulated marijuana to be legal um legally for sale in the city of Purple Creek. That's number one. The second thing that it purports to do is to set a five percent excise fee on the sale of of marijuana. I will just tell you, without taking a fine to, fine to comb, uh, fine. Yes.
Fine to.
Fine to. Fine to comb to the ordinance itself, especially those kind of more general terms with regards to the regulations of regulated marijuana. Um, I will tell you that um the fact that this ordinance purports to impose an excise tax and does it in the way uh in which it is contained within this, in this ordinance, does not comply with state law. As you know, in Colorado, our state constitution uh contains what is referred to as T A V E R, taxpayer bill of rights, which contains some very formal procedures for how to impose a tax. And this ordinance does not comply with that. So given that, um, I think, you know, it it is, it has a defect, and I think it would be very difficult. It would create um, it would, it would create confusion, at the very least, um, to adopt it. Because again, you have to adopt it if you were to do so in the form that it has been presented to you. So I would um be happy to answer any questions on that.
What what do I hear you say in criminal law? That it does not conform to T A V E R. Okay. So therefore, uh, if it were to pass, it could be somebody could challenge it. Okay, and basically, you're putting, uh, again, it would, it would be put on the ballot. It could uh it really has no merit because it's against state law as such.
That is correct. At least with regard to those tax provisions.
Right.
It does contain a severability provision. I would say that if passed, anything that's unconstitutional would be pulled out. But yes, that and that and that was a great summary as you state, councilman or mayor of some.
Okay, yeah, if it does, if it were to pass by, it goes on the ballot, it's passed by the voters. Uh, it then can't go into effect.
The taxing portions do not go into.
The taxing portions do not go into effect, but uh licenses could eventually be issued to recreational or medical or whatever.
Yes, art, um, in theory, all of the other provisions, setting up a local licensing authority, setting up their requirements for applications, those could go into effect.
Thank you, mayor.
Um, this brings up a question. So if we uh do the second motion move to reject and send it to the voters, would we still be in time for this year's ballot to do a separate taxation question?
Yes.
Okay.
Your question.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion to reject ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh eight and refer the ordinance to the registered electors in the city at the November twenty twenty-two general election and direct still to prepare ballots. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Vote please.
Mayor Pro Tem Letherland?
I have never done this. Uh, eleven years I've been up here, I'm abstaining. It's not because of the uh topic or the uh the uh the ordinance. I think it's a mess. Period.
So. Councilman?
Yes.
That's not a valid reason to abstain.
Oh, okay, well.
But I understand.
Okay, I'm simply using Robert's rule or there you go. Okay. Uh, okay, do you need one, one reason? Okay, uh, first of all, I think that five percent tax uh is an absolute, it it's insane uh that it wouldn't cover our police officers, our our city clerks' staff time, nothing. So I'll just leave it at that.
Councilman Trinary?
Yes.
Councilman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Salomani?
Yes.
Mayor Ashler?
No.
I'm sorry, I I need to point a board. Councilman Letherland?
Yes.
You need to vote on the measure. You cannot abstain unless you have a reason such as.
Well, I just gave you this.
Well, no, 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 but I mean, there, every council member needs to make um a decision on a matter that's a business that comes before you. Unless you've got a conflict of interest.
I have no conflict of interest. I was simply reading what I felt was the proper procedure, or Robert's rule was ordered. And I could quote, I have what marked here that, uh, you know, if I abstain, I I really don't have to give a reason. Uh, and I I just feel that I, I, you know, I will abstain.
Very well. Thank you.
So.
Lou?
Yep.
The motion to reject was three yeses and abstain and a no. Thank you.
All right. I'll go ahead for this meeting. There's any adjournments?